Hello and welcome to the Long Beach Post 2024 Candidate Forums. I'm Jason Ruiz, the City Hall reporter for the Post and joining me is my colleague and one of our columnists, Jackie Ray. The Long Beach Post, the city's largest nonprofit newsroom, has held these forums in the past to help voters like you get more familiar with the candidates and hear where they stand on issues. These forums and other elections coverage can be found at our elections website, which is lbpost.com/elections. Today, we have candidates for the city's eighth city council seat joining us. Sharifa Vats and Tanua Thrashentuk are looking to replace longtime council member Al Austin, but the district they're running for has changed due to redistricting. The area includes several North Long Beach communities that are part of Bixby Knolls and areas adjacent to the LA River. One of these two candidates will be the first new representative for the area since 2012. Before we let them introduce themselves, we'll go over the ground rules for how this is going to work. Each candidate will have about two minutes and 15 seconds to respond to questions, but no additional time will be granted for rebuttals. A timer will be visible for them to help keep track of that. Now, each candidate will have two minutes and 15 seconds for an opening statement. Tell us what makes you the most qualified person for this seat and we'll just do alphabetical. So we'll start with Sharifa.
Great. Well, good afternoon and I want to thank the Post for hosting this forum and thank you to the residents who are watching at home. My name is Sharifa Vats and I am running for the eighth district city council seat. I was born and raised in Long Beach and I have worked in the maritime industry for over 30 years in various roles, including over 15 years in safety and now I'm the head of environment and sustainability. My husband and I are the proud parents of two daughters. We have six grandkids and along with my mom, Hattie Harry, we are very active in the Long Beach community and school. I am a proud Long Beechian. I'm a mom, a grandmother, and experienced business leader who has four generations living and invested in the future of the eighth district where we have lived for almost 30 years. I have been involved in the city as a parent, a volunteer, an advocate. I'm an Equity and Human Relations Commissioner, part of Leadership Long Beach 2024 cohort, VIPS for the LBUSD, and I sit on multiple boards in the city. I took the lead of creating the North Long Beach Clean Street and this involvement has provided me with a unique perspective about the challenges and the opportunities that are present in the new eighth district. As a longtime resident of Long Beach, my connections are with the community. I am not married to a politician nor connected to them. I want to do the work in the community where I was raised as I have a solid sense of commitment for the future of our eighth district and keeping Long Beach strong, safe, prosperous, and economically sustainable. Together, we are going to champion a good paying job, public safety, economic revitalization, supporting business development, reducing homelessness, improving the quality of life, including fixing potholes, sidewalks, and trees, and developing an environmental initiative in the eighth district. I hope voters do their due diligence because tens of thousands of dollars of outside money are being spent on my opponent. I do not live behind a gated community, which allows me to stay connected to the people and the issues in the eighth district. It is important to have a deep rooted person in office who will be the voice of the community. So I'm asking you to check the facts and vote for Vats. Thank you.
Okay, and Tanua, you can go ahead and introduce yourself to the viewers as well.
Thank you so much, Jason and Jackie, and thank you to the Long Beach Post for hosting today's conversation and to my opponent for being here. My name is Tanua Thrashentuk and I am excited to run for this seat, Long Beach City Council District Eight. You see, I tell my story because I believe my story is deeply connected to the experience of so many families here in Long Beach, specifically the eighth district. As a young woman, I grew up in a household with my grandparents, my mother. I lost my father to gun violence when I was only one years old. But my grandparents, hard union working people, were committed to ensuring that our communities were places that they could raise a family, do business, and make sure that there was opportunity. My grandmother, someone who was a janitor in our community, was someone who made sure that her family had what they needed. And my grandfather picked up trash and as a little girl in a place that I thought was a really nice neighborhood and brought home all kinds of finds, one of which I still have in my home today, a globe. And my mother was a para educator, someone really committed to ensuring that young people had the vision for what was possible for themselves and for their families. As the first in my family to go to college, I went off to UC Berkeley and then off to MIT, where I did a master's in city planning. All of that education and experience I have brought back to my community because I've never forgotten my roots. My family is rooted here in Long Beach since the early 40s. And as someone who lives in a community where my family has grown up, we are raising our children here, having already had at least one adult child and two young ones here at home in Long Beach. I have been involved in this community for years, from our local JCC to our local PTAs, including serving as Mrs. Long Beach. The commitment to public service runs really deep in my family and I have had the pleasure of working on policies in our community that have changed the access for opportunity in homeownership as well as employment opportunities. Here in the eighth district, residents tell me that they are concerned about issues of housing, homelessness, as well as public safety. And I look forward to sharing my record of public service and all of the things that I have done to ensure that we're building that housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanua.
Okay, great. And now we'll just jump into some of the questions that we have put together for the forum. And because Sharifa went first, Tanua, you'll get to answer this question first. So, Long Beach right now is anticipating a budget deficit as large as $28 million, which means that, you know, assuming they don't find $28 million in revenue, that that could require cuts to service, cuts to staff across the city. Where do you think the city could save money?
So one of the things that's really critical for a city like Long Beach as the only city in the country that relies on the oil wells that we own and we know that that industry is changing, it's really critical that we make sure we have alternative sources of revenue. I'm pleased that the city is in the process right now of putting together a study so that we can better understand what some alternatives might be, especially being a city, you know, by the ocean and a city that can be able to attract tourism, for example, as well as space beach. When it comes to taking a look at where we can look at tightening our belts as a city, one of the things that I would want to make sure of is that if we have to, that all of our city departments are part of that. I know it's really difficult to think about exactly which areas, but I would want to make sure that we're thinking about what are some of those upstream services that we provide that create safe communities, that give people an opportunity to be able to participate well in our community. So making sure we have those programs in place. Youth Services continues to be a critical part of our puzzle in terms of making sure that we have a thriving community today and a thriving one going forward. Certainly, we know that when we look at the budget, a big part of it is including keeping our community safe. And safety is not just firefighters and it's not just police officers. It's also services and investment in mental health support and other services in our community. So I would want to make sure that whatever we did in terms of cuts, that to the extent that we can possible, we look at every department to identify places of saving so that no one department is any more impacted than the other and that we continue to keep our eye on the ball with the outcome and understanding, how can we make sure we grow the revenue of our city?
So just to clarify, you think that if cuts are necessary, your libraries, police, fire, parks, everybody should contribute if there needs to be cuts?
We are a city family and the hope here is that as we see ourselves as a city family, that means that if there is a chance to have to make a cut, let's try and make sure that the entire family is able to be part of that and can do their part in helping to make savings with the budget.
Great, thank you. Sharifa, same question to you. So $28 million deficit this year. And I should say, I understand that this issue is going to have to be resolved before either of you are in office. But, I mean, enough of good news, but the city is projecting deficits for the next few years. So whoever gets into office is going to have to make these decisions. It's not just the this year problem, right? So where do you think the city could save money?
Thank you for asking this. The budget, it's an important role for a city council member. Long Beach has a general fund of about 16 million and an overall budget of 3.2 billion, which is allocated over 24 various departments. So in 2025, as you mentioned, it's anticipated that we're going to have about a $28.4 million deficit. And if the city is unable to retain the Long Beach Recovery Act funding for an additional year, by 2030, the deficit is expected to grow to 71.3 million. So Jason, you're right. At that point, whoever's sitting in this council seat is going to have to attack it. That means that we need to strategically analyze the budget as tough decisions with cuts are expected and we will need to be vigilant as we explore innovative ideas to increase revenue as well as grow the economy. We have to advocate for new and innovative ways to produce revenue for the city, including cutting the red tape to attract and sustain quality businesses and that's without raising taxes or fees that make it harder to live and work here. Green technology is expanding, wind, pure wind, and this is a huge opportunity for revenue and to generate for new jobs. I received my MBA and my doctorate in Business Administration. I deal with budgets at home and in the business world, so I am quite familiar with budgets. Reviewing the budget documents from previous years to help identify the trends in the city's finances, identify areas of concern, and then areas that need improvement is critical. Asking all departments to cut excess spending, including non-essential services, and finding more ways to operate more efficiently at the start. I was very grateful that the city had the community engagement sessions that I attended because we were able to work on the community budget at the meeting and the members were able to participate with the service where we had the opportunity to voice by selecting the top three programs or services in three categories that we felt were most important. So some of those services included tree trimming, addressing potholes, closing libraries, park ground maintenance, youth programs, sports camp, all these services. And these are things that will be in addition to reducing salaries.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just jump in? I did the same with Tanua, but I'm curious. You said, you said non-essential services. So could you give an example of what you think is a non-essential service?
That I'm going to leave that part to the actual departments and what they, each department of the 24, they can go in. They need to cut the fat. They know where they have excess spending, right? They deal with their budgets all the time. Once that's finalized, then we get to go in with the next link.
Okay. I think Jackie has the next, Jackie has the next question for you guys.
Okay. Yes. So understandably, voters are still very concerned about our city's homeless population. So we'll start with you, Sharifa. How would you grade the city's response to homelessness thus far and what would you do differently?
Such a great question. So the city has been vigilant and taken action when it comes to homelessness. Long Beach is the seventh largest city and our resources attract people who are unhoused from surrounding cities. Homelessness is a crisis affecting not only the people's lives, but also the quality of our community. We have done a good job in trying to be proactive, but we were already a little reactive. We need to make sure that we have a plan that can adapt and address chronic homelessness by continuing to expand with proactive services that keep people housed and off the streets, quickly shelter and stabilize those in need and promptly facilitate connections back to permanent housing with the necessary supportive services. I have traveled to other cities and spoke with leaders who have had success with reducing the number of people who are unhoused. And I took notes, key learnings, best practices, such as the Housing First, which prioritizes stable housing as a first step coupled with supportive services, or a coordinated entry system, which utilizes a centralized system to assess and prioritize individual needs, ensuring targeted assistance. Data is so important. On my mom's birthday, we joined many volunteers on January 25th in the city to help count those who are unhoused and we counted right here in the eighth district. Because having that accurate data is extremely important to receive the proper funding from the federal government and understanding the reasons why people are experiencing homelessness and their specific need to determine the necessary resources. So moving forward, we need to continue to take the steps to direct the services to get people off the streets and away from schools, parks, and in permanent supportive housing. The eighth district is unique because we have an inner jurisdiction with LA County, City of Long Beach, UP Railroads, the flood control bump up to Lakewood and Carson where encampments form. So the coordination and collaboration to tackle the homelessness is necessary. Improving accessibility and services provided into the shelter, I think we can do a better job with job internship placements, financial literacy training, rental assistance and legal aid, and then investing in homelessness prevention policies through drug counseling and mental health treatment programs for those who need it. It's crucial to tailor to these specific needs in the community and continuously evaluate their effectiveness.
Thank you, Sharifa. Tanua, same question.
So I'm the only candidate in this race who knows this issue. I've served on the Housing California Board, the Southern California Housing Board. I've served on several measure boards around housing, the Federal Home Loan Bank around housing, and not only have I traveled across this region, across this country, but I have traveled internationally and been selected to really figure out how do we address homelessness, not just as a local issue, but as a international issue and the issues that are associated within. I've had the pleasure of making sure that we have built affordable housing. I financed affordable housing. So the intricacies of what it's going to take to put housing first requires that we build those units and are connecting with people to understand what their issues are. And for the last decade, I have been out there making sure that we count the homeless, including specifically counting here in the eighth district. What I do believe that our city has done well in recent years is focused on declaring a state of emergency here in Long Beach. By declaring a state of emergency and as a city that has a public health department, we've been able to put resources out there that are unprecedented in being able to open shelters, open them year long, you know, all year long, making sure that they are accessible to folks and being able to get resources out into the streets to talk to people and connect them with services in community. All over our city, at our parks, at our libraries, we have a department of personnel from the city who are out connecting with people and making sure that we keep them housed in addition to providing them services to become housed going forward. So when it comes to areas where I think we need to be focused on, we've got an opportunity with the new county agency to be able to go out and get additional resources countywide. We're the second largest city in the county and frankly, we've got about 3,400 homeless people on any given night that are homeless in Long Beach. Of course, every single one is one too many, but it is a possibility that we can get to all of those individuals and provide them with a pathway inside.
Okay. The, because there are only two of you guys running for this seat, it will be decided next month. There's, right, there's not going to be a runoff. So my question to Tanua first is, what is the policy change in any area that you will work on immediately if you're the one that wins next month?
So thanks for that, Jason. I started running through my head. I was like, there are things that I want to do on the surf. The, sorry, there are things that I want to do there. In terms of a specific policy change, I think for me, it will be something related to small business. I am very interested in ensuring that we are attracting small business specifically to the eighth district. We've got some commercial corridors that just don't have the level of engagement and activity. And I'd love to see resources go towards being able to provide some initial investment to small businesses that are looking to open in parts of our city where we need that energy on the street as well as the opportunity to revitalize those commercial corridors. So that's one area where I know I'd want to invest. I'd like to be able to, I just recently had an opportunity. I've done it before, but did it again recently, walking the commercial corridors and engaging some of our businesses there. They're specifically asking for resources to make sure that they can redo their storefronts. They're asking for resources so that they can be able to attract more customers. They're looking for support to be able to make sure that they can invest in some of their infrastructure in their particular small businesses. So I'd want to try and figure out how do we really put more support behind those small businesses so that we can really activate the corridors in the eighth district. Not only will it be a great job creator, it'll keep eyes on the street in our community and really for our residents who've been calling for some investment in our commercial corridors just to make a more livable and exciting city for the eighth district here in Long Beach.
Okay, and Sharifa, if you are the one who wins this race next month, what's a, what's a policy change that you would work for immediately? Well, I guess you'd have to wait till December, right, to get sworn in, but you know, once that happens?
Thank you for asking this. My focus would also be on small businesses. There's a top three, but small businesses is definitely one. Because the eighth district has taken hits with our businesses from the closing of Ralph's a while ago, OSH and a major retail developer backing out, and the Bixby Knoll shopping center losing both CDF and Riley. There's a lot of work to do with the economic development in addition to our public safety. There's a great potential for small businesses in this district. So I plan to lead the charge to improve our economic vitality by working with the city staff, leveraging my relationships and working with the community neighborhood association leaders to reverse our negative image. Like I said, I took the lead with the North Long Beach Clean Street where we work with other neighborhood associations to pick up trash and then beautify our neighborhood. Research shows that communities are safer when residents have access to stable jobs, high-quality schools, social services, and clean and vibrant public spaces. So as I canvass through the eighth district, I'm speaking with business owners. They're looking for better lighting, cleaner streets, safety within their, around their businesses. And I also attend the neighborhood association meetings with my neighbors. They're opening up businesses in other districts just because they feel safer there. So I intend to make myself personally available to listen to the needs and the concerns of businesses in the community and assign a portion of my staff's time to attend chamber meetings as part of my outreach plan. I'm also a member of the Long Beach Chamber, so I plan to utilize those resources that are available through this group. I plan to partner with the neighborhood association president to coordinate a unified community effort to survey the businesses regarding best practices that can be shared and the risks and hazards that need to be mitigated. Collaborate with the ninth district city council member, Dr. Joni, to determine if the Uptown Business Improvement District can extend further south or start a process to create our own BID in the eighth district to help the small businesses in our community and to revitalize the district by reversing that negative image, attracting new businesses so that the business owners, we hold ourselves accountable to the specific standards.
Okay. Jackie, I think your question, I think, is more naturally after, you know, what they both have just said. If you want to go ahead and ask that right now.
Yes, you, you both have talked about revitalizing the commercial corridor on the podcast and here today. Tell me some specific policies that you would do in that regard to make sure that the eighth district commercial corridor can be revitalized. Tanua, I believe we're starting with you.
I believe we're starting with Dr. Vats.
She just finished. Okay.
Yes. Repeat your question, Jackie.
So you both have talked about revitalizing on the podcast and today you both have talked about the importance of revitalizing the commercial corridor. As far as policy, can you name some specifics that you want, would want to see happen in that regard?
Yeah, so when it comes to policy, offering the small businesses, expanding, looking into any local as well as state funding that can help them when it comes to offering them business opportunities, looking into the building owners and seeing where we can partner with landowners, business owners. We have small businesses that are located in other areas of the city. For example, the Pan. They are now moving to the Old Sizzler off of, not moving, but opening another location off of Delamo. So gathering and seeing who we can partner with in the community, even another district. We have our two sister districts, which is District Nine with Dr. Joni and District Five with Megan Kerr, and seeing what business opportunities do we have where local small business owners are looking to open another location, bringing in the different community members so that we can then start on the micro level of development and being innovative with our ways to attract these small businesses. More on the back, on the micro macro development, excuse me. We want to make sure that the city's top industries are being focused on. And so we have the ports, logistics and supply chain, the aerospace and aviation, housing and education, and the arts, culture and tourism. And we have what they need to grow these jobs. Like I spoke with Pure Wind, we have hydrogen that's growing, these green technologies. We need to concentrate on workforce development. That's another opportunity here for economic development, making sure that the next generation is prepared to come in and be able to start working these new jobs will help with the economic development as well.
Thank you, Tanua.
So I wake up every day. There are probably two major areas and policy issues that I work on. Affordable housing and homelessness is one, but the other is small business. That is why I am supported by the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce in this race. I am the candidate with extensive experience in ensuring that small businesses get what they need. Your question is specifically about the policies and the things that I'd want to do to attract and revitalize our commercial corridors here in the eighth district. So first of all, I know how to get rent relief out to homeowners as well as renters. We need to create some commercial rental relief and opportunities for small businesses. We've got to activate some of these abandoned buildings. And if we can help with some of the rent to get those businesses started, we might be able to attract some local businesses to get started. There's also the, just the cost of doing business in our city. And I'd love to expand on the work that we did with the Everyone in Economic Inclusion Initiative, which meant that if you open a business in a part of Long Beach, specifically the eighth district where our commercial corridors really need that energy, you can get a relief or an abatement on some of the taxes that you owe the city and some of the fees that you have to have for the city. So creating a period of time of abatement so those businesses are able to get into the storefronts in our area and can do it with a lower barrier in order to do that, so that rent relief as well as abatement. And then the other area that is always so critical to small businesses is capital. So being able to help to expand, I helped to start our KIVA program here in Long Beach, micro loans to small businesses. We know they still need that, so funding that at the city level. And it's funding that is part of crowdfunding. So the city doesn't have to fund it all. We have neighbors who want to participate. And so really activating that and encouraging our small businesses to know, hey, we'll help you with the rent, we'll abate some of these taxes you owe and we're going to get you the capital that you need in order to operate in the eighth district.
Okay. Long Beach, as you guys are aware, like the rest of the region, is under a lot of pressure right now to build more housing, to address the housing crisis that is, you know, affecting probably the entire state at this point. Where in your district would you offer up a spot to build more housing? And I believe this goes to Tanua first.
Yeah. All right. So yes, I do believe in production. When it comes to how will we tackle the affordability of housing and how will we manage and stave off homelessness, we've got to increase the supply of housing. We've already heard me describe here in the eighth district that we've got some commercial corridors that are in need of life and activity. So there's plenty of commercial corridor space on Atlantic as well as Long Beach Boulevard where we could specifically look at some multi-story developments, some of which that are going up right now, where we could invest there to be able to add housing. Several of those sites, specifically on Atlantic, are owned by the city. So we have the potential to work with developers to help guide and ensure that that housing is responsive to community, meaning it's of the scale, it's of the size, it's of the beauty that we'd want to see in the neighborhood. And so that would be a place. In addition to that, the Long Beach Housing Promise, which is a new initiative that came out just this last year, asks not only our city and private developers, but also our school district and our community college, if they can also participate in building housing as well. If they can also participate in building housing as well or identifying land. And in the eighth district nearby, there are lots where the community college has an opportunity to build housing and I'd love to work with the school district to identify lots in the area where housing could be built. We've got, it should, there should not be a single empty lot in our community. And the fact that we have several right now means that we have far too many, given that we are way behind as a city in the number of housing units. We've even told the state of California that we would build. So I see those commercial corridors as the starting place where I'd want to put that housing. And then there are some residents who have expressed interest in bringing on accessory dwelling units or ADUs on their property. That might be a secondary place that we look, because some parts of the eighth district, I will admit, are quite congested and may not be the most appropriate places.
Right, and to your point, you know, with that, that project, I believe it's called the Beat, right, falling through? Those are some city-owned parcels that, that you don't have to ask who owns them because the city does. Sharifa, same question to you. So you, you become the city council person for this district. There's a lot of pressure to build housing. Everybody agrees, but nobody really wants it built in their backyard, right? I was at a meeting the other day where this was being said. So where in the eighth district do you think, you know, the housing should be built? Could be built.
The eighth district is home to a large percentage of affordable multifamily housing in Long Beach. We have the Carmelitos, the Communities of Grisham, North Point, Seaport and Ackerfield. Some of these are section eight housing. We have the Old North Library that will now become affordable housing. In re, in reality, we don't have many opportunities to build in the eighth district. So we need to be strategic and diversify, you know, where we can build housing at all levels. That includes for sale, market rate, affordable housing, low income, workforce housing and ADUs. We have a huge opportunity with existing homeowners and building ADUs. That may be the future for the eighth district. And this is already part of the housing solution for the city. Cities are required to do their fair share and create more housing, but not enough is being done to assist the cities in meeting these requirements. So for cities like Long Beach, who's home to a diverse community, I'm going to look into offering more opportunities for local homeowners and developers to work together to promote ADUs to ensure the construction of the new housing has a mixed market rate and low income units. I'm also going to look into the mixed use housing where businesses are on the first floor and housing is available on all the upper levels. As we look to build, we got to look and also into eliminating or reducing the parking requirements. Because many cities have already reduced or eliminated this with positive results. I will work and support the state and local financial opportunities for families, such as first time buyer programs. Look at the Long Beach Affordable Housing Trust Fund that's already in place. But support the efforts to increase that state funding. We currently have about thirty-three thousand in the fund and the money can be used for housing needs in the city. That's extremely low for an above moderate income houses. When it comes to community land trust, which is a nonprofit, community-based organization, where they acquire the land and, and develop the real estate. We need to start capitalizing on all of these opportunities where we can build more housing. But ADUs will likely be the way to go for the eighth.
Okay, ADUs. They are certainly increasing, yeah. Jackie has the next question.
Yes, so Jason and I hear this time and time again. It's the common complaint from residents that they find it very difficult to get ahold of their city council member, especially when it comes to addressing quality of life issues. So Sharifa, if you should win, how quick should the response time be? How quick can constituents expect you to respond to them if you should win?
One thing I'm very good at is responding, either via text message, email. I am quick on responding. Being in safety for fifteen years, my phone was on twenty-four hours a day. It's an expectation that I have also of anybody who works under me in the business world. Because communication, transparent communication is key. Doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to have the answer, but at least the initial acknowledgement of receipt that I hear you, I will get back to you. Set a timeline of when you can work with the community and get their issues on the table. Bringing people together so that they can be addressed. It's a lot to be a city council person. And I'm sure every city council person does the best that they can between juggling probably their day-to-day job as well as their staff and the city. But communicating with the constituents who voted you in office is a number one priority. Hearing their voice is a number one priority because you were voted in to represent the people who, who are living in your district. And if all of a sudden they feel as if you're not listening to them, then that's an issue. That's the concern. So I will have transparent communication. I will always be available. My staff will be available via emails, phones, text messages, turnaround time of at least twenty-four hours with the initial receipt. Does not mean you're necessarily going to get your response because some things take research, some things take time. However, acknowledgement should always be within the first twenty-four hours.
Okay, and Tanua, same question for you. If you should win, what can constituents expect your response time to be?
Constituents can expect that residents will come first. One of the reasons why I'm running, one of the reasons why I ran the last time is because I believe that the eighth district needs and deserves a city council member who is absolutely responsive to them when they reach out to that office. But beyond that, that second piece that I'm also committing to for the eighth district is that I will be that champion that will ensure that your request not only gets done, but if it's a city request, I'm going to work with you to make sure that we get those city departments to respond to the needs of our district. I am an advocate and that is something that the community can count on. One of the things that I've talked about with residents is that they feel like they don't know if someone has even heard them and, and know that they have reached out to their local elected official. I want to make sure in my office that we are documenting every single call we are getting, every single text, every single email. To me, I have been someone who's worked with the public for many years of my career. And I believe that making sure that we have transparency and knowing when someone has reached out to us is really important. It also helps me see if there are any trends. Maybe you don't know that your neighbor reached out for the very same issue. So having a clear system in place in my office where we're recording exactly who we're hearing from, what their issues are, where are they in the district? And are there any trends that are consistent with others who are in the district will be important. Beyond that, I talked about being a champion for local residents. I want to make sure that you don't feel like you have to call to figure out how to get street sweeping done, to get your trash picked up. You've got a question about something going on in the city, we're going to find out together, right? You don't have to make that call on your own. It's going to be me or someone in my office who's going to be responsive. The other thing you can count on with me is that I'm going to do it with a smile. I'm going to do it with patience. This, these issues are, you know, loom large for our residents. This is the number one issue for them and they want it addressed. And you know what? I'm here to help them get those things done.
Perfect. Thank you, Tanua. I'm going to stay with you, Tanua, because you kind of touched on your relationships with the city. You have over half of the city council and the mayor supporting you. You have also served on the mayor's transition team when he took office. If the eighth district residents need something that the mayor and city council don't agree with, how will you make sure that you prioritize the needs of the constituents over your relationships with city council?
Oh my goodness, now that's quite easy. So let's be clear, I co-chaired the mayor's transition committee. I'm proud of that, not just serving on the committee. So I was very involved in shaping some of our citywide policies. We know that people in the eighth district, as you've noted, they want a responsive city council member. They want someone to help them understand and traverse the city to figure out what it is and who it is they need to call in order to get certain things done. Knocking on doors, people want a safe community. And a safe community includes activating our commercial corridors, providing our youth with things to do, making sure we have programming in our parks. And it also means that we have enough police officers available when there are emergencies that warrant their intervention. I've heard from eighth district residents that they want access to quality jobs. So that means that we want to make sure that jobs that are offered within our city are available to eighth district residents. My, I started out the last question by noting that I want to put residents first in this community. And so they need what they, the thing that those relationships offer to them is hopefully a pathway that'll give me an opportunity to pull forward on things that are important to the eighth district. Because I have those relationships, I'll be able to work with my fellow council members to say, hey, this is uniquely eighth district. Frankly, the eighth district is one of those districts with very few public resources from the city. As a result, we don't even have a public really available facility for a council district office. That's regardless of that, my residents will know that I am going to be having a, a district office within the district to ensure that I'm accessible and in the community. So all of those relationships, I'll make it clear to my fellow council members, hey, the eighth district doesn't have what everybody else has and I expect and my community deserves and sent me here to ensure that we get our fair share.
I didn't even realize, I didn't even realize that the current eighth district office is in the fifth district. I'm looking at the map right now. A different question for you, Sharifa, but kind of along the same lines. You're, you're kind of the outsider in the, in the race, I think. And you know, with majority of the council members supporting your opponent, if you win, how, how would you be able to work with people who maybe didn't support you? Sometimes it's hard for council members who do win like that to get traction with, with things that they're trying to get, you know, accomplished. So how, how would you work with, with the council if you're elected?
Great question. One thing I am is a champion when it comes to building strong, effective teams and being a team player. Went to the Olympic trials for the four hundred meter hurdles. I had to be a team player there. As I explain to people, Long Beach is a nine-person relay team. Each district is its own leg. And it takes all the districts to work together to get that baton around for Long Beach to be a robust and effective and safe and prosperous, vibrant city. So I have the skills and the talent to work with anybody. And we will work together, starting with my two sister district, which is Dr. Joni and Megan Kerr, and building out a plan because the north needs to be great. And it takes teamwork to make the dream work. And so that, that means that you have to work together and be that team player. And that is something that comes naturally for me, you know? And so I really appreciate that question. I am not one to hold a grudge, but I am one that will represent the eighth district. I will be that voice to where I don't owe anyone anything. Who I owe are my constituents. And that's who they know and they vote me in, is going to be there to be the voice of this district and this community.
Great. I think Jackie has. What's that?
I said, thank you, Sharifa, and yes, I have the last one.
Jackie has the final question.
So the eighth district has been represented by Al Austin for the last twelve years. What can you take away from his tenure to inform how you were served if you win the next, in his seat? If you're his predecessor, Tanua, let's start with you.
We just finished with Dr. Bad.
They were specific questions.
Okay, alright. So one of the things that I think that the current council member has done really well that we want to continue to build on that legacy of is ensuring that we continue to have the green space and programming within our parks within the eighth district. This particular community is one that butts up against the seven-ten and as the gateway to America via a number of heavy vehicles that travel through this community. We want to make sure that this community is not one that bears the brunt of the negative externalities of gas exhaust that comes through here. One of the ways that we deal with that is ensuring that we have parks and public space within our area. Under the councilman's leadership, he has been able to increase the amount of park acreage in our area. Right next to my own home here in Molina Park is in our area where I take my son to be able to play on some pretty cool park apparatuses here. In addition to that, with Davenport Park area, there's been investment there that continues to be ongoing. And with Shear Park, we've done some visioning around what's possible for an urban pocket park. So I'd want to see us continue with that. Not only does it build the quality of life for residents who live around those areas when we have, then take the next step and do more programming within those areas. It beautifies the area. It provides youth with a positive outlet, especially Shear, where we've got a community center and some programming there around sports. But it also helps to clean our environment and give our local residents a fighting chance in their lower than average live, life expectancy compared to other parts of the city. And so I want to see us do more of that. The DeForest Wetlands is also part of that. And top of my list is to try and figure out how we expand that and continue to make sure that that is a great and vital resource here in the eighth district.
Thank you, Tanua. And then Sharifa, what will you take from Councilman Al Austin if you should win to push District Eight forward?
Well, what I hope to take one is to be in office for three terms, just as he was. Because a lot of change takes time. The majority of the time, councilman was in office, it was the old eighth district, which included the Virginia Country Club and the majority of Bixby Olds. So of course, the makeup and feel was different. But overall, Councilman Al Austin has delivered for the community. As Tanua mentioned, with the Molina Park, expanding Davenport Park from five point five to eleven point five acres, repaving Delamo and Market Street. One of the goals that I have as I go door to door, people are like, can you just take care of us? Can you fix our streets? Can you take care of our sidewalks? Can you cut the trees? And get the trees pulled up that are impacting our sidewalks. I would want to continue with the good work that he's done with Delamo and Market and making sure that also the sidewalks were ADA compliant and continuing that throughout the district. As well as I have gone street by street by street as I am canvassing and I'm taking note of all of the eighth district neighbors that I have spoken to. So take note of that, neighbors. And come up with a strategic plan because we have to repair our street. Everybody knows that we have all replaced tires and it's time that we have smooth streets just as the other areas in other parts of Long Beach. But establishing the DeForest Wetlands by providing thirty-four acres of open space, protecting the environment is near and dear to my heart. Professionally, being the head of environment and sustainability, utilizing that expertise to create a corporate strategy to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions was something that I want to cascade out to this community. Because the two thousand and nineteen Long Beach Community Health Assessment noted that residents in the nine oh eight oh five have a life expectancy that's almost ten years less than some of the other zip codes in Long Beach. And other research shows that number is closer to fourteen and a half degrees. So District Eight, we're situated where we have the seven-ten, the four oh five, the ninety-one, the UP Railroad and the planes heading to and from Long Beach. Well, these are things that we need to attack, so I want to expand on an environmental initiative as well.
Great, great. Yeah, I, I think I hit about five potholes on the way down to downtown, so. Streets are a problem everywhere almost, especially after the rain. But we'd like to thank everyone for watching this forum for the eighth city council district race. We'd also obviously like to thank the candidates for joining us today to talk about some of the important issues facing the city and their ideas on how to maybe fix them. Remember that our election coverage will be housed on our elections webpage at lbpost.com/elections. It'll be live through the rest of the year where stories, interviews and forums like this one will be accessible. If you want to support the Long Beach Post election coverage, you can become a supporting member of the Post or give a tax deductible donation for a nonprofit now. Details about how to support the Long Beach Post can be found at lbpost.com/join. I'm Jason Ruiz, this is Jackie Ray, and thanks for tuning in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you, guys.